Mayor Watkins.
Here.
Vice Mayor Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Eric.
Here.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Staley is excused this evening. Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
I guess I should turn my mic on, too. I'm sorry, Annie. Our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Dennis Cronkite of College Park Baptist Church. I would ask all of us to stand for that, please. Then afterwards, Councilman Eric will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Join me in prayer, if you would, please, each one. Our great God and Heavenly Father, we want to begin our time tonight with Thanksgiving. Certainly, it ought to be a theme of our hearts daily, but we, especially in this time of the year, remember the goodness of God, that you have done so much for us. We live and move and have our being in you, so we give you thanks that we can look to our Heavenly Father and acknowledge that our lives are in your hands. And then, Father, we want to thank you for leaders, for good leaders that lead us in good directions. We are grateful for the many leaders you give, from our high offices on down to whatever it might be. We thank you, Father, that you have granted us good people in many places to help us in our government areas. Father, we thank you for life and breath. We thank you for a country that we can have, and we remember our foundation so many years ago that it was founded on the principles of Scripture and on the God of the Scripture. So we give you thanks for all of these things. And then, Father, we offer our requests, a time of asking for even this meeting tonight, that those who are in charge and those who participate, that this might be a meeting which is overall guided by your hand. The decisions that would be made would be decisions that would please you, that would honor your word and your person. We pray for each of our council members, our mayor. We thank you for them, and we ask, God, that you would watch over them, give them strength and wisdom as they make important decisions that, in many cases, affect our lives. So we give these things to you, and we ask for your favor this day and the week that we're in and the days ahead, and may the favor of God be upon our country, and we ask for that as well. We ask it all in the great name of our Lord Jesus Christ, our Savior and our coming King. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A.3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. Item one, call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. First, we have Mr. Ron Jewitt. Would you like to come forward?
Is this working? Okay, I'm Ron Jewitt, and I just represent some of the folks that live close to Manzanita School. You guys all know who I am, but grateful for you guys who responded back to my email. I hope you all got my email I sent out after the meeting last time. I went home and I was up to about four in the morning, just kind of thinking, what can I do? What can I do? And I researched as much as I could, and I found the C3, and I found the other zone that surprised me. It's on the general plan 2030, which was voted on 2021. And I realized it's a general plan projected land use map, and it has the area where Motel 66 is as a highway service commercial. So you have C3 and highway service commercial. And then I went through and I spent the rest of the night looking at zoning codes, trying to figure out. I liked to find the definition of those two codes. I couldn't find it. So I don't know if there's any way someone can email me that or something so I can look for it. Because I need to explain to the -- I'm a sign after man now, my neighborhood. I try and explain to them that it's all zoning. It's not emotional. It's zoning, you know? And so if we could just get that, and I can explain to them. I know there's a meeting Monday night. They want me to basically do the same thing I'm doing here Monday night to that meeting, so it's not -- I'm not here to yell at anybody or anything. I'm just here to just talk facts. So definition should be great if we can get that, and my legal counsel wants to look at that also. And I also recommend, I learned a lot because I was up, I just really worried about it because I heard on YouTube Catholic Charities, human trafficking. There's a lot of good things about Catholic charities on there. It's called Catholic Charities, Human Trafficking. A lot of really good things on there about Catholic charities. There's a lot of not-so-good things on it. Also, I think it's good that we all get familiar with what's going on, how they're doing things and why they're doing it and where they're doing it. There's a lot of information on the YouTube channel about Catholic charities and human trafficking. One of the -- the two concerns, and I know you all know this, you've heard it already, is having unvetted people that close to the elementary school. It's huge. And that's a real emotional issue. The other one is, there's already neighbors talking about selling their houses if this goes through in the area because they're worried about what kind of people are going to be in the transitional housing. And I told them, we can't stop it. There's no vetting. According to what I read, there's no way to vet a transitional housing place. So I don't know if there's anything you can do as a city council. I really don't. I don't have the answers. I just know that it's a really big concern, and I'm sure you all have the same concern. So all I'm saying is just really look into it, look into that zoning, break it apart. I'm going to have my legal team look at it also and just see if there's something we can do to just put teeth into protect kids, you know? I'm not really -- I don't want to say on TV. Oops, sorry. I'm not really worried too much about -- am I over time? I'm sorry. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jewitt. Here's Janet Wilson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Janet Wilson, resident of Kingman. Thank you for your appointment recently to the Clean City Commission. And as part of my job, I have to take different routes going to and from the tennis courts and where I normally travel. I usually go straight line here, straight line there. I've been circumventing different streets, looking to do my job. And in doing so, I happen to be very aware of the scooters that are being abandoned for at least a week at the Cecil Drake Park. There are two. At the corner of Southern and Monroe, there have been two have been parked. And over by the Moose Hall, there are two that were abandoned. So they're very prevalent in our neighborhood. They get abandoned that far because I think that's when the battery runs out. But they promise that they pick them up in a more timely manner. I haven't been able to locate an 800 number for them to report them, or I would have, but I just wanted you to be aware again that we're having issues with that. And thank you for your time. I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Item number two on our consent agenda, I mean, item two consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Counselors, is there anything that we need to pull and discuss, that you would like to pull and discuss? Vice Mayor? Okay, seeing none, can I have a motion then to approve our consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number three, old business. 3A Sunbelt Park Service Agreement Final Design. This agreement is with J2 Engineering and Environmental Design, LLC, for the engineering, professional design services, and final design of the city of Kingman's Sunbelt Sports Park. There will be a fiscal impact of $478,519 to the Capital Projects Fund. Staff recommends approval.
Mayor, council, I just wanted to just say a few words before Mike Miersman, our Parks and Recreation Director, gives you the overview of this particular item. This has obviously been something that a lot of the community has been wanting for some time, and this is kind of what I would consider an underserved area of the community. So this is very exciting, the timing on this and such. So this is what I would call a strategic project, and Mr. Miersman will go ahead and talk a little bit about this, and will be available to answer any questions you have. With that, Mr. Miersman?
Yes, so I think everybody's been aware that we've been working on this for a really long time, so we're really excited about it, too. And the drainage channel, which is, the design is being worked on right now, and that's about 97% complete, maybe 98%, and we should be getting that back very shortly, which we're excited about that. And the challenge with this property has been the fact that when the property was donated, we found out after that that more water flows across that property than flows into Monsoon Park. So that's what's been the holdup on the project, basically. And we also got an IGA with the school for an additional six acres behind the school, where we'll be adding more fields there, multi-use fields. These are going to be basically multi-use fields with several different layouts that we can do with soccer fields, and they'll be able to be used for all different projects like that. And there's also a fire station along the west side of the park project, between the school and the park area. So like I said, it's a project that we've been working hard on for a long time, and council, I know, has been anxious to get this going, and we've been anxious to get it going. So like I said, if anybody has any other questions, I guess I'd be happy to answer them, but I don't really have too much other information that will all come back to us in the design, so we're excited to get going on it.
Mike, can you remind us what we originally budgeted for the engineering design on this?
It's slightly more than what we're spending. I don't remember exactly what it is, but it's slightly more than what we were expending. But also, the drainage channel design is $100,000. That's coming out of that, too. And also, we're saving some money on the design of the restrooms because we're going to use the same design for the Lewis Kingman Park project that we're going to do. We're going to use the same, and those are going to match our existing restrooms that we have at Wallack Ranch. We're trying to stick with the kind of like the similar theme, and so we're going to be saving some money on the design there as well.
I appreciate you bringing that forward, and the only reason I ask is because I had a concerned citizen call me and said, $478,000 for engineering, a sports park? And, you know, and I said, well, I reminded him, though, that we had lots of drainage issues over there. And so a lot of engineering to go into that.
And we had budgeted more. We were actually, the design is actually under what we budgeted. So I think we're, and it's because of the reasons that I just said, though, the fact that the drainage channel design is in there and also the savings of not having to design a restroom.
I think this will be a great addition to our park system, so I'm excited to see progress on it.
Huge.
Council, any other questions for Mr. Miersman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Yes, Sean.
Hi, Mike.
Hello.
I see that there's 10 soccer fields on here, and if I'm looking at the dimensions correctly, you're looking at about 2,000 feet long, maybe 1,000 feet wide. Is that correct?
I don't have the exact measurements right in front of me here, but basically, those aren't all full-size soccer fields in the design that you're looking at and that was sent to you, and we could pull that up, too. It's four full-size soccer fields in that area, and then several smaller soccer fields for the younger kids. That layout, and we'll be able to do all different kinds of layouts, really, there. So, yeah, if you look at the pictures there, that's kind of what the preliminary design was, right there. So, and there's also the six acres is up from that, that the school's property is.
Okay, now, the concept is just soccer, or is there going to be kickball there? Any other activities throughout the year?
It's going to be multi-use, so they'll be able to use it for, like what they do all of our parks, basically. They'll be able to use it for softball practice, for all different, any activities. Football might be done there, too. There's also, we're looking at basketball and volleyball courts there as well.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yep.
And you're anticipating having tournaments here, I'm assuming, correct?
That's definitely the hope, yes, for sure.
Okay, part of my concern is the parking. Growing up here and knowing what Centennial Park does when we have our softball tournaments there, we have a little bit more parking there. Is there a possibility of overflow parking there at all?
Well, yes, and, you know, obviously, we looked at that, too, and we just, with the amount of space that we have, we didn't really want to eat it up in parking. But there's also, where the fire station is going to go there, until the fire station is built, we'll be able to park in that area for now. And also, we have an IGA with the schools where we can utilize their parking lots for, because soccer tournaments and things like that would be mostly on the weekend when nobody's in school. So with the IGA we have at the school, we use their parking areas at all the different schools that are near our parks, so. And also, for now, too, the road along there would be roadside parking there until that develops more, obviously.
Got it. So the school parking lots will not be locked down? They'll be open for events like that?
Yeah, they lock them down, but we get the key to it, and we do that at Lee Williams. We do it for all the different parks that are by us. When somebody rents Metcalf Park, we get the keys to the gate at the school, and they get in there, and then our rangers lock them up when the event's over.
Okay, then I noticed that there's three Ramadas that are scheduled to go in. Is most of the seating going to be lawn chairs, or is there going to be any bleachers, so to speak?
We don't have any planned bleachers, but most of it's going to be lawn chairs, and we're looking at having a slightly elevated area around the side where there'll be, you know, we could move bleachers in, too. There's going to be a path that goes along the outside of it that we could move bleachers. We have a lot of portable bleachers that we can move in for that, too, so.
I'm actually, you know, I'm sorry for these questions, but I'm excited about this going in. I just know that our city is very sports-oriented, and I have a feeling that we're going to be busting this out in capacity, and I just want to make sure that we can handle that. I would recommend, if possible, to have at least a couple more Ramadas because it's so spread out and with the snack bar being at the front by the parking lot, which I understand for service purposes, that's a lot of walking for people to have to go do and move around that place. So maybe a couple more Ramadas, in my opinion. You know, I'm just one voice, but I think it's, the design is great. I look forward to it, but I just had to ask these extra questions because it was peeking my brain, so to speak.
Those are all great questions, really. I think they're all great questions, and I'm a big fan of having more Ramadas as well, and those, all things can be ironed out in the final design. If we want more Ramadas, we can tell them, let's look at some more spaces that. We just have to be cautious to eat up flat space where soccer fields could go and put Ramadas. So we'll put those off to the sides and things like that, I think, so. I think we can definitely do more of them, and like I said, I really like them a lot, too. We rent those out, and people utilize our parks in many, many cases with the Ramadas that we have, so.
Will there be any barbecues on the park?
Yes, at the Ramadas, we'll definitely have barbecues, and we'll have some picnic areas as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilor Savage. Good questions. Mike, along those lines, too, of course, I'd like to see more Ramadas. And of course, pickleball is such a big deal now. In fact, there was a report on Fox News that came out either yesterday or this morning about, and Arizona is one of the top, I think we have the largest percentage of pickleball participation by the public. You said future plans, of course. This is how many acres right here, this plan?
It's 20, and then six of the schools that we're going to be using.
Okay. Of course, I know there's no, it would be hard to squeeze pickleball into this.
Right.
And I know we have some great pickleball courts over at Centennial, but I'm just trying to add more amenities to the park.
Well, and we also have some, we know that we can add a couple more pickleball courts at Centennial. And the positive thing about with them being at one location for our city is because the way we operate them, we rent them out, and mainly, we do that to keep them clean and nice and not become other things besides pickleball courts. But anyway, and so if they're all at one facility, we could add a couple more pickleball courts there, and I just think, and eventually, if we want to have them at other places, we can do that as well, but then it's going to be challenging to manage them and keep them as nice as we like to keep them because I think if you look at our tennis facilities and pickleball facilities, they're clean and nice and well-kept because we keep them locked and under key, so I think it's pretty important, so.
Okay, and of course, as we've talked about, even from the get-go of the design of this park, this is more, it's multi-use, but it's really geared more towards soccer because we're not going to have dedicated baseball diamonds like we have at a number of our other parks.
That's exactly right. It's more aligned for soccer, but it could be utilized for any sports as well. Like a lot of our parks, the green spaces in our parks are used for youth football, for, you name it. They're all their practice and their sport, so it's great stuff. So this is going to be a great amenity for, and like the city manager said, it's an area that, right now, has been annexed years ago and not much out there. So, and it's going to obviously be growing out there, and so it's really exciting to get ahead of the ballgame, really, and get this going, so.
Well, once again, I'm glad, most importantly, too, is, you know, for the public's knowledge, it's great that it's coming in under budget, that we set aside certain monies for it, so that's great. Good job. Council, yes, counselor?
Just to understand properly, the six acres are on outside of the northern border?
They are north and slightly north and west. They're north and west, but right along the border. Right next to that, see the green baseball field that's there? It's just up from that.
Does it go to the right?
Yeah, to the right a little bit, but it's mostly, it curves around behind the school over there.
Okay, so you're going to probably make a path by that.
Yeah, there'll be a path all around the whole outside of it because there's going to be a drainage channel around the whole outside of the six acres, and so there'll be a path along that drainage channel.
I just wanted to get an idea where the six acres.
A nice walking path. There'll be really, really a nice walking path we envisioned, so I think it's going to be a really good project all the way around, really.
I love it so far, so.
Okay, council, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, can we have a motion then approving item 3A Sunbelt Park Service Agreement Final Design?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
We'll let Sean make the motion. Counselors would like to make the second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mike. Item 4A, new business. Resolution number 5481, approval of a street deferral request on Yavapai Street, Engineering 23-0126. An application for a deferral of street improvements has been received from Jack Jaeger for a property located on Yavapai Street, north of Airfield Avenue. Gives the parcel number APN 311-04-107B. The parcel for the single-family home is adjacent to a dirt road that is maintained by the city. Because of this, when the home was built, street improvements were not required. The applicant now wishes to construct an accessory building on the newly acquired vacant property. The Traffic Safety Committee met on October 19th, 2023, and recommends the deferral be granted with the condition that the property owner participate in the construction cost when the block is developed. Resolution number 5481 will require the property owner to participate in the cost of construction in the future and will serve as the guarantee. Staff recommends approval. Yes?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and council. Mayor, would you mind also, I think for simplicity tonight, we'll have both A and B?
Yes.
The staff report be given at the same time, so would you mind also including that in your reading as well?
That's a great idea. And then, of course, 3B goes along with this. Review and recommendation for an exception to the requirement to extend a water main, Engineering 23-0126. Staff has received a request for a variance from the requirement to extend a water main from Jack Jaeger for a parcel located on Yavapai Street, north of Airfield Avenue, APN 311-04-107B. The applicant now wishes to construct an accessory building on the newly acquired vacant property. The Municipal Utility Commission received this request in their October 26, 2023, meeting and voted five to zero to approve the variance. Staff recommends approval. Yes, city manager?
Yes, and so we're going to have our city engineer give a report on both of these agenda items. It's 4A and 4B. And then, after his report, the applicant is here, so if there's any questions, feel free to ask any questions of the applicant. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Allred.
Good evening. So I'll try to walk you through the situation here, but we have two items, a variance request for both street improvements and for a water main extension. So when the, I'll just preface, Yavapai Street currently is maintained by the city of Kingman up to this north property line of this property here on the left and this area here that I've got highlighted in blue, where there's an existing single-family home there. And so the properties in question are the ones there on the right-hand side, the area in blue and yellow. So when the house for the area in blue was originally developed, it was separate, it was a separate parcel, and there was water going across the frontage of it, and the city is currently maintaining the road up to that point. So when it was developed, there wasn't a requirement to extend the water main, and since the city was maintaining the dirt road on Yavapai Street, there was not a requirement to do street improvements either. So after the home was built, the property owner purchased the area in yellow and then combined the parcels, and now they're wanting to construct a structure on the parcel there in yellow. So that now triggers our requirements for both street improvements and for a water main extension. So the street regulations allow for an appeal to the street improvements, and the council can grant a deferral. And there's some language in the regulations that says that there are certain things that you can grant a deferral for, and one of them was related to drainage. And so I just want to show here just some of the site photos of the area in question. So right here, this is where the city maintenance ends, and this is looking north on Yavapai Street, and you can see that there's a lot of drainage that goes through there, and there's a lot of cutting that's occurring as a result. And this is just a side view. You can't see it as well, but you can see the city's tried to put some rock there to help limit the erosion of the portion that we are maintaining. And then this is looking south, back towards Airfield, and so again, you can see that there's a lot of cutting that's occurring. The home here on the left is the one that's requesting the deferral, and I think that's it. So the Traffic Safety Committee looked at this, and because of drainage, where the recommendation was to recommend a deferral of the street improvements until there's a time that the remaining block can be developed and kind of have a holistic approach to dealing with the drainage for that block. And so we've prepared Resolution 5481 that would grant the deferral with the condition that the property owner participate in the construction cost later on. And there's an agreement that is attached that would run with the land, and basically, when that street does get developed, the property would then be required to participate in the construction cost for the frontage, for the area that's in yellow. Okay? And then regarding the water, similar things. When we looked at it, we were concerned about cutting and took it to the Municipal Utility Commission, and they did grant a and took it to the Municipal Utility Commission and they did grant or recommend that we grant the variance to extend water. And so that's my summary. If there's any questions that you have, I'll do my best to answer them.
Thank you, Phil. Questions for Mr. Allred?
I did have a question. Hi, Phil. What is going to be the trigger to develop this area? So when is the applicant going to have to participate? What's that trigger?
So when, when there's street improvements, either by the city, if we go on and do a capital project to do street improvements or an improvement district or something like that, which would already cover it. Or if, if a developer came in and decided to improve the entire street as well, that, that would also trigger it. That's how it's, it's written in, in the agreement.
So what happens to those other adjacent parcels if someone were to purchase those and want to build a, a home?
You're talking about the undeveloped parcels? Well, right now, so I think if someone wanted to come in right now and, and build a house there, it would trigger street improvements.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Yep.
And of course, Phil, for clarification, Mr. Jaeger would be responsible for extending the water line only to the end of the yellow, to the north of the yellow, right? To the, where his property line ends, correct? Where the yellow ends?
Correct, so.
I mean, that's, that's common practice.
That, yeah, so our, the way our utility regulations read is you would only extend the, the water main across the frontage of the, of the parcel.
And of course, street improvement too goes, goes hand in hand with that. Okay, thank you.
So just as a follow-up, I'm sorry. So if somebody purchased 076 and 75, or 076 or 075 and wanted to build a home, that would trigger for the applicant to then have to participate in the street improvements because it's across from his property, which then means the extension has to happen?
That's a good question. So 75 and 76, they, they would be required to do their half-street improvements, right? If we do what we're talking about in the future with the street regulations, when someone does, yeah, I, I, I'm thinking yes, that, that would trigger it.
Okay, all right. I just, the reason for my questions is as development happens on that street, I just, I mean, I'm hoping that the applicant knows when his participation is going to be necessary. And if somebody goes and builds on 076 or 75, that that would trigger that. And then the participation has to be then between those parcels that are there, which there's not, there's not many. And so the cost is going to be quite extensive, I would think.
So the, they would only be responsible for their frontage, whatever the improvements.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be for the, the entire thing, just their frontage.
Right. To each residence that is getting improved. Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Counselor Eric, did you have a question?
It was literally the same exact question.
Okay, real good. Counselor Walker?
I do have one question. Phil, will he be required to upgrade the road to the end of the proposed structure parcel? Or are we just going to leave it right where it is now?
I think my recommendation would be we would not have him be responsible for everything going south back to Airfield, if that's what you're asking. So his, his responsibility would only be for the area, frontage across the area highlighted in yellow.
Okay, so he's going to have to get that road to standard for you guys to blade it because you blade it now.
Correct. So the, the idea would be, I don't know, this is such a unique situation. Because technically, if someone were to, going back to the 075 and 076, the way the utility regulations would read is if they develop that, they would have to pave it all the way back to airway, right?
Well, my question is, is bring it up to city standard to blade it, not to pave it because we're allowing him to build there. And right now, the city maintains it to his north property line on the existing house.
So you're saying in the interim is what you're?
Yeah, I'm just asking, is that something you guys, is that, are we just leaving it the way it is?
I think we're just going to leave it the way it is and, and not maintain that section in, in, in the yellow. And I, I don't think that they were requesting that. They, they weren't, they're not going to access that portion from, from Yavapai. It's coming from the, where the existing home is already.
Okay, that was my only question.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Savage?
I'm good.
Okay, real good. Once again, counsel, great questions and it's important to get all the facts out. So we appreciate that. Okay, Carl, can we make a motion? Do we need to make two motions since these are two items?
Each individual item.
Okay, that's what I thought. So can we have a motion then for 4A, Resolution Number 5481, approval of a street deferral request on Yavapai Street?
I'll move that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes? Any opposed? Motion carries. Then item 4B, review and recommendation for an exception to the requirement to extend a water main for this said property. Can we have a motion for that, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
You have to be quick on the draw, cherish.
Losing my touch.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 5, Department Reports, A, Destination Strategic Planning Program. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Counsel. Josh Noble, our Tourism Services Manager, is going to be giving you a brief presentation on the Destination Strategic Planning Program and process. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Noble.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Grady. Mayor, members of council, this is really to give you some advance notice because you'll be participating in a stakeholder survey to help us with this project. So the Destination Strategic Planning Cohort Program is one of our selections within the Arizona Office of Tourism Marketing Cooperative. That's that program that we can select research programs and advertising campaigns that have been vetted by the Arizona Office of Tourism and also paid 50% by the Office of Tourism. The timeline is that we've started with our orientation with a planning team. The planning team consists of Bennett Bradley, myself, Desiree Paulson, she is our Visitor Center Coordinator, Commissioner Gish from the Economic Development Advisory Commission, and then Jim Hinckley. And then we had a meeting to discuss the survey instrument that's going to be sent out and the goals that we want to do with that. It does show that the stakeholder survey here would be in November. That's actually going to be in December. So you'll be seeing an email coming out on December 4th. And there'll be two weeks that we'll have that out, looking for getting feedback back from our stakeholders. We have about 80 stakeholders that we're looking for information from in the hospitality industry, key nonprofits and elected officials, a few key city employees like parks and economic development. The, in January, we have the planned development. Oh, well, some of the categories that we'll be looking at in those surveys include the mission, reputation, marketing and management goals, tourism drivers and assets, tourism enablers and supporters, and challenges and opportunities. And then January, we'll have a planned development where we'll work with Cardgio Group and the Arizona Office of Tourism to develop that strategic plan. Cardgio Group is the consultancy that will be working with us on this program. They were founded in 2006. They've worked with 35 different state office of tourism's and hundreds of local destination market organizations like Kingman's. So it's a very well, it's a good group to be working with on this. And then February, possibly March, we'll be having the final planned delivery. I do have a trade show I'm going to in February, so it might push things back just to make sure that we're not kind of rushing the gun, to make sure that we can accomplish everything we want to accomplish. The framework for the strategy is to identify our vision. That's, you know, kind of the forward-looking, the ideal concept of our destination, the mission or the purpose of our organization, what we want to take on or what we don't want to take on, the position, what unique assets we have. And then from that, we identify three areas of focus that we need to focus on accomplishing and then success measures for each of those areas as well as strategic actions that we can act on in order to accomplish those goals in each area. And this is an example. You should have it in your slide, but this is kind of a one-page template, what it would look like. So it's real easy to see what the vision was, what the mission was, and what areas of focus we're wanting to tackle and how we can go about doing that. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Josh. Counsel, any questions for Josh? Yes, Counselor Eric?
You mentioned that it would be 50% paid by them, by the state, and 50% by us. But what's the price range of something that you would typically look at?
So this, this particular strategic planning program is $4,000. We're paying 2,000 and the state's paying the other 2,000. It'd probably be quite a bit more, but since they are offering it to a multitude of destination marketing organizations, we're getting economies of scale and it's going to be a lower cost because we're one of a few strategic planning sessions that they're conducting.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, Josh, thanks again.
Thank you.
Item 5B, under Department Reports, Rancho Santa Fe and Kingman Crossing Traffic Interchange Update. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to go ahead and have our city engineer, Phil Allred, give you the latest information, which is kind of exciting. I mean, we're getting closer, as you can tell. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Allred to explain.
Finding the, all right. Good evening again. So just a quick update. I'll start with Rancho Santa Fe. So we do have a little bit of good news. The FAA approved the environmental assessment. So actually, that's huge. And so we're, that, and just as a quick reminder, what, that, that covers the Phase 2 improvements, the portion that goes across the airport property. And so the next steps with the FAA is for the city to submit a notice of alteration to them. We need to, we need to do that 45 days before the start of construction. And so I don't think there's any, anything wrong with a submit, like, I don't think there's an expiration or anything. So I think we're just going to go ahead and submit for that. The one thing they ask us for is the, the construction start and end dates. And so we'll kind of have to figure that out with our development partner and kind of get a feel for what that's going to look like. As, also as a part of that, we will need to finalize the actual land release and the administrative record with the FAA. And so we will be working on that as well. That does not have to happen prior to construction. That can happen concurrently. The only thing that, we'll need to have the administrative record and land, land release finalized before we can record the easement for the roadway easement that goes across the airport property. So on the FAA side of things, that's, that's the good news that, that we have. Just as a, also as information, we are still waiting for comments back from ADOT on the 95% plan submittal. They've told us that they're anticipating getting those back to us the second week of December. So I think that's everything that I have for the Rancho Santa Fe project. For the Kingman Crossing project, there was a comment resolution meeting held with ADOT last week to go over their comments. There's a second meeting that's scheduled next week to continue that discussion. A part of the ADOT team was not able to be at the, the meeting last week. And so we're, we're still working through the comments. There's, there's probably going to be one or two lingering comments that we got to get resolved with ADOT. After that is done, AECOM will work on finalizing the 100% plans and getting those ready to submit to ADOT. So with that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Phil, appreciate that. Actually, since we have you up here, can you give us any more information about, because of working, you're working with ADOT about the Beale Street bypass and when that timeline might be started? We all get asked about that, too.
They're ready to go. I think they were looking to bid at the beginning of the year. I think, I think they, they were trying to get it ready for December, but last I heard, I think they were trending more towards the beginning of the year for, for getting that, the, the West Kingman TI out to bid.
And then as part of the process, normally it's what, that bid is out there for what, six weeks?
I would anticipate it being longer than that, but I, I haven't heard what they're, they're looking for. It's a big project. It's like $160 million. So I would imagine it'd be more than six weeks.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the update on that just because, once again, it's good for the public to have that information. Any questions for Mr. Allred as far as Kingman Crossing, well, Rancho Santa Fe and of course, the West Beale TI?
We'll, we'll kind of restrict any more of the West.
Oh, I'm sorry, Carl. It's not on the agenda, right?
I was giving you some leeway.
Well, thank you. Anyway, for Rancho or Kingman Crossing, Vice Mayor? Nope? Okay. Okay, hearing none. Phil, thank you. Appreciate that. Item number six, announcements by mayor, council members and city manager. We'll start with our city manager, Grady Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I have no further reports tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Walker?
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Ward?
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Eric?
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Counselor Savage?
Yes.
Do you have any comments?
I had to attend, well, I didn't have to attend, but I attended the Airport Planning Department Meeting yesterday via Zoom. There will be a scheduled draw site invitation for the commissioners to come out. I asked to be part of that. And once I find the date of that, I would like to invite the other council members to come to that.
Great. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I have several. You had me quite busy last week. Thank you for taking a vacation. So I attended last week quite a few events. So one, though, that I, I attended the Park, the Parks and Recreation Golf Commission meeting last week. I just wanted to put it out there in the public that we do have a program to adopt trees and also adopt and place park benches. So if you want to have a tree planted in memoriam or just wanted to donate a tree, we would definitely find a place for it. So same with the park benches. I also attended the Mojave Community College induction ceremony for their honor society. So I got to speak to that group of inductees. There was about 50 of them. So I had the pleasure of addressing them. I attended a meeting with the governor. The governor, Katie Hobbs, was in Kingman last week. So we got to talk about a lot of things that Kingman could be facing and, and some challenges that we're having. Groundwater resources, workforce, housing, affordable housing. Got to talk to her about the upcoming budget session and the deficit that's proposed and gracefully asked her to stay away from our state shared revenues and leave them alone because we need them for streets. So I did get to talk to her for about 40 minutes. So it was very productive and, and enjoyed that very much. Also got to attend the WECOM Farbeur event. They have two big expansions in our area, Mojave and La Paz. I just wanted to tell those of you, they're, they've got some big, big plans for the Walupi Tribe Nation. They are going to put $4 million in infrastructure investment on, on the reservation for the broadband expansion for the Walupi Tribe. And also in Mojave and La Paz County, they are putting in $550 million infrastructure investment. So they are doing some great things to bring broadband to homes in our area. And Chairman Travis Langenfelter was there from Board of Supervisors. The governor was there as well as, you know, several WECOM representatives. So that was, that was great. there, as well as, you know, several WECOM representatives, so that was great. Also got to attend a water panel discussion sponsored by the Kingman Area Chamber of Commerce and the Business for Water Stewardship, so we talked about all things water, both groundwater and surface water, so that was very educational. Senator Borelli was there, Representative John Gillette was there. It was great. And then I did also get to attend with Councilman Ward, the Veterans Treatment Court graduation and Judge Singer's court, so that was very gratifying. I know Councilor Eric went to his first one, so it was nice to have good representation from council. They did graduate two individuals from the Veterans Treatment Court, and so they're doing, they're doing great things over there, and I'm sorry that Judge Singer left, I wanted to be able to tell him that. So, that's my week at a glance. How was yours?
I had fun sailing on a cruise ship, so, but it was a family vacation that was planned for over eight months with my wife's brother and sister-in-law, it was one of those things I couldn't get out of because I was sorry that I missed, well, I gave you a lot of stuff to do.
I had lots of opportunity, and I thank you for that. Lastly, I did want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
And I do want to publicly thank our Vice Mayor for doing such an amazing job covering, you know, representing myself, but also representing our city at all these great meetings, so thank you again. Of course, once again, I want to wish, just like our council has already said, a number of us, about wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving and safe travels during that for you and your loved ones. I did want to remind everybody, and of course, a lot of this stuff you can find on the city's website of some of the activities that are going on in the city, but the Radar Hill Lighting, join us for the relighting of the Kingman Christmas Tree on Radar Hill. Lighting ceremony will be at 6:00 PM on Friday, the 24th, at the City of Kingman Golf Course Clubhouse. And then also, coming up, December 2nd, building, it's the Very Merry Street of Lights Display, and it'll be lighting of our city Christmas tree that this year I think is going to be up on the roof if I... Is it on the street?
They're going to do it, but it's actually on.
So, okay.
Front yard.
In the front yard? Oh, is it over, okay, well, great, because I know it got changed a couple different times. So, anyway, that is coming up on December 2nd downtown here on Saturday from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. And so, of course, this event is, the street in front here, Vice, yeah, City Manager or Annie, is going to be closed off, and it's just going to be pedestrian traffic only?
That's correct, Mayor. It is all of Fourth Street from Andy Devine all the way up to Spring, and then Beale from Fourth down to Sixth, and it is a walking pedestrian traffic only, no motor vehicle traffic this year.
Right. So, it should be a great event. Just want to make sure everybody knows about that coming up. And of course, as we prepare for the holidays and all the hustle and bustle, I want to remind everybody to please be careful, drive safely, strive to be more courteous, and when I say that, I'm really talking to myself, okay? I know, I'm not the best of drivers sometime, so I've got to work on that. But anyway, once again, we wish everybody happy Thanksgiving and safe holidays. Moving on to finally, item number seven, Council Request for Future Reports and Updates. Okay, Councilor Eric?
I did want to get something that kind of addresses the future. I got a report that I pulled with Mr. Grady that was talking about how we don't have anything that really projects the future accurately, if you look at the demographics consensus that comes down from like 28% down to 25% or something like that. Basically, everything is either stagnant or going down in numbers, including future employable citizens of Kingman. And I think it's inaccurate. I am confident that it's inaccurate. I see our city growing, so I was wondering if we could get more, maybe a proper report or something that kind of isn't assuming a worst-case scenario, and maybe more optimistic. I can forward that later.
It's always good to be more optimistic.
I just think that we're planning for a growing city, and we're working with numbers that aren't showing growth, and I think it's key, especially if we have houses being developed, we have to think about who's going to be in those houses in the future and whatnot, so I was, yeah.
Good point, and I know that was one of the things that, I think the governor brought it up, or we had talked to her about it as far as workforce housing and affordable housing, so, good point. Manager Miller, if you can maybe address that at a later date?
I definitely will. I did see the email earlier and asked Bennett today if he could get with you on that, but he will follow up on that, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, thank you, Counselor. Any other requests?
Yep.
Councilor Savage?
Along with Genzen, see the future of the city as far as growth potential, and I think a lot of that has to come through cooperation with the county. I don't know if there's any type of feasibility study or whatnot that goes from Andy Devine to Stockton Hill, kind of like a roundabout, which, I get confused down the mix with all their 101s and 301s and all that stuff, but I think we need more access from the east to the west off of Andy Devine. I think that's going to be a crucial, I'd like some type of possible idea or study on that, as well as more feasibility coming off of the east side from Rancho Santa Fe off of Airway and Walupai. We only have the two accesses right now. I know, hopefully, the TIs are going to help improve that, but I'd like us and the council to see how that's going to be affected.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Savage. Staff has heard.
We've taken notes, and we'll be putting our heads together, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Try to come back at a later date with information that's been requested tonight.
That's fine. Thank you, Mr. Grady.
Thank you, Counselor Savage. Okay, seeing no other requests for future reports and updates, we are adjourned. Thanks again for being here.